Welcome all to the National Capital Planning Commission's October 4th meeting. For all in attendance, please note that today's meeting is being livestreamed on the web, on the ncpc.gov website. We do have a quorum, so if there's no objection, we will proceed with the agenda that has been publicly advertised. Agenda item number one is the report of the chairman, and I have two items to note. First, I'm pleased to welcome Sally Barnes. Sally is the executive director of Australia's National Capital Authority, the equivalent of NCPC in the capital city of Canberra. She's obviously visiting us from Canberra. There she is. She has spent a couple of days with us. I had the pleasure of spending about two hours with her last night, and it's amazing that challenges are the same the world over. We've had an excellent opportunity to share the challenges and the strengths of our capital cities. Second, I'll note that this morning commissioners had an opportunity to visit the National Law Enforcement Museum, which is set to open to the public later this month, mid-October. So I want to thank Davis Buckley and Craig Floyd for the tour. They gave us an excellent opportunity to see what's going on at the museum, and we encourage you to follow its progress and visit it when it's open. It's terrific. Agenda item number two is report of the executive director, Mr. Costin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and also welcome to Ms. Barnes. We invite the commission and general public to attend a special event at NCPC on Tuesday, October 16th at 6:30 PM. We're welcoming Helen Marriage, founding director of Artichoke, a London-based arts charity that specializes in large-scale public art events and spectacles. The session will be moderated by Sakina Khan, deputy director of the DC Office of Planning, our colleague. And for further information and RSVP, go to ncpc.gov, and you also have a copy of the invitation there. She's quite interesting, and I hope you're able to attend the session. We also welcome Linda Ramirez-Blust, who unfortunately could not attend today's meeting because of class. She will focus on the Monumental Core Streetscape project, and she also is a graduate student in landscape architecture at Virginia Tech. And finally, we wish all the best to urban planner Michael Deo, who has returned to his hometown of Miami. Michael worked on our Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative, and more recently, our continuing work on small cell infrastructure, which, by the way, will be on next month's commission agenda. So you'll have a lot to work with next month. So we wish him all the best and thank him for his service to the commission.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Costin? Agenda item number three is the legislative update, and general counsel, Ms. Skylar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one item that I would like to report. HR 6672, which is known as the Republic of Texas Legation Memorial Act, was introduced -- I'll give you a little history in a moment, Mr. Chairman, so you can -- stop that asking, look at me. But it's a bill to authorize the Daughters of the Republic of Texas to establish the Republic of Texas Legation Memorial on federal land in the district. So to refresh your knowledge of Texas history and to place this memorial in context, you need to remember that from 1836 to 1845, Texas was an independent country known as the Republic of Texas. As such, it sent diplomatic representatives to Washington, DC, and had what was known as a legation, Texas legation. The proposed memorial would recognize the contribution of the Texas delegation to make possible the annexation of Texas by the United States so that Texas entered as the 28th state. The bill authorizes the memorial to be in the form of a plaque with an inscription recognizing the legation, and it also requires the establishment of the memorial to comply with the requirements of the Commemorative Works Act.
I'll refrain from comment. Any questions for Ms. Skylar on the legislative --
We'll refrain from comment.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Skylar. Agenda item number four is the consent calendar, and we have two items. Item 4A is the approval of preliminary and final site development plans for the temporary relocation and replacement of a radio communications tower at the National Zoo, and that is brought to us by the Smithsonian Institution. Item 4B is approval of preliminary and final site development plans with comments for an antenna installation on the Department of Agriculture's South Building in Washington, DC, and that's brought to us by GSA. Any questions on any of those two items? Hearing none. It's been moved and seconded that we approve this consent calendar as is. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Thank you. First item on the agenda is item 5A, and that's to approve comments on the concept plans for the National World War I Memorial to be located at Pershing Park. It comes to us by way of the National Park Service. We have Mr. Fliss. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As mentioned, the National Park Service, in collaboration with the World War I Centennial Commission, has submitted revised concept plans for the National World War I Memorial. The commission, the World War I Commission, is the project sponsor of the memorial and is also responsible for planning, developing, and executing programs, projects, and other activities to commemorate the centennial of World War I. NCPC provided comments on the concept design in November of 2016, and then most recently in July of 2017, just over a year ago. And since that time, the proposal has continued to be developed. Congress has designated Pershing Park, which is located in downtown Washington, DC, as the site of the memorial. A two-stage competition was held to select the memorial designer, and the winning design, "The Weight of Sacrifice" by Joseph Weishaar and sculptor Saban Howard, was selected by the World War I Centennial Commission. So just as a reminder, Pershing Park is located in downtown Washington, DC. Shown here on the screen, it's bounded by Pennsylvania Avenue on the north and south, and 15th and 14th Streets to the west and to the east. The park is located in an important civic and symbolic corridor, which, of course, links the White House and the US Capitol. The site is highlighted here in orange. The park is also within the Pennsylvania Avenue Historic Site, which is also an area of numerous historic and cultural resources, as well as a resurgent downtown. So here is an image of the park. The site is surrounded on the north by commercial uses, including several hotels with the Willards. You can see here in the background. Parks and open spaces include the Sherman Memorial, as well as Freedom Plaza, which are found to the west and to the east. Civic uses, including the Commerce Building and the Wilson Building, are located to the You may recall, in terms of history, in 1979, the PADC commissioned landscape architect M. Paul Friedberg and Jerome Lindsay to design Pershing Park. Under Friedberg, the park was imagined as a shaded refuge with a waterfall and sunken water feature that transformed into an ice rink in the winter. The park design reflected a desire for seclusion from the noisy streets which surrounded the site. In addition, a memorial to General Pershing was also integrated into the park plan. So here you can see a view to the west when the water feature and the pool were in operation. This is looking towards the western steps. The park was dedicated in 1981, and it was recently determined individually eligible for listing in National Register of Historic Places. So given this important historic context, the park's location within the broader framework of Pennsylvania Avenue, as well as its position as an urban park within the fabric of an active downtown, the commission has previously expressed support for several planning and urban design principles. These include supporting a memorial design that combines urban park and commemorative features successfully, also supporting a memorial design that respects the symbolic and civic importance of Pennsylvania Avenue Corridor, and then finally, supporting strategies that enhance Pershing Park while still rehabilitating or reusing elements of the original park design. So with that as a background, I'm going to walk you through the revised design and also the staff recommendations. I'm going to focus on three major components highlighted here, including the memorial wall, the pool, and pathways, and then finally, park use and programming. So I think it's helpful to frame this analysis by first making two points. First, the memorial design has changed substantially since the competition winner was selected back in early 2016. The proposal has moved from one that changed much of the park fabric to one that is focused on restoring and rehabilitating much of the original design. And then, secondly, I think it's everyone's intent to improve the existing park, and overall, we believe this will be beneficial to Pennsylvania Avenue, as well as the surrounding area. And as such, staff does recommend the commission find the park and memorial improvements can enhance Pennsylvania Avenue Corridor experience and also contribute positively to an active downtown Washington. So here you can see on the screen in front of you the scheme the commission last reviewed in July of 2016. Again, in this approach, they restored much of the park and also proposed a memorial wall integrated into the western steps of the pool, which is shown here. You can see on the right, kind of in the background. The memorial wall placement and design in that concept reinterpreted the location of Friedberg's original waterfall, which he saw in image of earlier. It also expanded it across the western terrace steps. This approach allowed for a clear front of the memorial facing the pool, where it would be approached and viewed by the public. And then by integrating the wall into the terrace, it also allowed for the creation of an overlook at the upper level that would allow visitors to stop and kind of look over the plaza. The new design, which is shown here in plan, no longer integrates the memorial wall into the western terrace, and instead, the future is a standalone element that's placed within the pool on the western end, and that's circled here in orange. This revision resulted from additional discussions with both consulting parties, as well as the Commission of Fine Arts, who gave concept approval to the design earlier in July. So here's another view of the proposed freestanding wall. Again, the design still includes a sculptural component on the eastern face, but it also adds a water feature and potential inscription on the western side. I will note that the sculptor has worked to reduce the size and the length of memorial wall, as shown in these diagrams. This was a request previously by the commission. The design also now includes an option for water at the base. This, again, is consistent with the commission's previous request to integrate some kind of water feature. So by moving the memorial wall into the pool, it does become a feature that can be seen from multiple viewpoints. The eastern face and sculpture is still intended to be the primary view. However, the standalone wall does create this other face that will be visible and must be treated appropriately. So here you can see, again, a view of that western side of the freestanding wall. As I mentioned, the applicant has proposed an inscription as also as a water feature on this side, but staff is unclear at this point whether this will be sufficient to create a space that is going to be attractive to visitors or comfortable to occupy. We know from other experience, including the existing Pershing walls, that walls can create challenges by blocking views and being perceived as barriers. If this freestanding approach is continued advanced, it should be designed holistically. As such, staff recommends the commission find that the freestanding wall in its current design creates a clear front and a back, and the space at the rear of the wall is not yet fully developed. We also recommend that the applicant provide alternative design strategies that treat the memorial element in a more unified manner without a true front or back, so that it's not perceived as dividing the park, but can engage visitors from all sides. So moving on, as with the previous design which you saw, the current proposal includes rehabilitating the Central Plaza and the pool, and also adding a pedestrian path that would allow visitors to circulate in front of the memorial wall. The applicant has provided three options, which are shown here, regarding the path alignment and the pool design. And as with other aspects of this project, of course, the options attempt to weigh functionality, programming, as well as historic preservation concerns. So the first option includes an L-shaped walkway. This does retain the existing pool depth, which is about a foot deep, and this design most closely retains the original pool depth, as well as the general footprint, while providing this new pedestrian connection between the eastern and northern portions of the plaza. This additional connection may be beneficial by providing visitors a new route that passes by the memorial. So here you can see that same proposal in an aerial view with the L-shaped walkway passing in front of the proposed memorial. The second option also includes an L-shaped walkway. However, in this case, there is a 16-inch-deep pool along the outside of the L and a proposed scrim, or a very kind of shallow water sheet, on the inside. The introduction of the scrim retains the general footprint of the pool again, but it does alter the depth of the water in this particular location. Because the scrim would be flush with the plaza, it would also allow programming if the water was turned off and it was in a dry state. So here again is that same view. Again, this looks very similar to the previous option, but in this case, that inside portion of the L is actually a scrim, which is very shallow water. So the third option changes the configuration of the pedestrian path. So in this case, it's a U shape, again, with a deeper water around the perimeter and a scrim of water on the inside. At this point, the applicant has indicated that this is their preferred approach. The pedestrian path, again, starts and finishes on the eastern side of the Central Plaza, and because of this configuration, more areas devoted to the walkway. As with the previous option, again, in this case, the scrim could be turned off and used for potential programming. So again, here's that same scheme in an aerial view. And then here's rendering showing how that scrim area could be used for events in the future. To better understand how the trade-offs between all these options, staff does recommend that the commission request that for each of them, the applicant describe how the water feature in the plaza area would be used throughout the year, and this is an example for one of them. We also want them to recognize the differences in temperature and other climatic conditions through the summer and winter months. We'll also note that, as with many water features in Washington, DC, the pool will probably be empty for some period of time, and this can also influence how the space feels and functions. I'll also note that the original early design for Pershing Park also included a variety of plantings in and near the pool, and the opportunity exists to incorporate these kinds of plantings to help soften the hardscape and also improve the visitor experience. The applicant does continue to work on a number of details, which will continue to be developed prior to any final approval by the commission. These include how the new pass will meet the plaza level, as well as water. I'll also note that the applicant has indicated they're continuing to work with the National Park Service to address issues related to safety, as well as fall protection, and any such measures, if they are necessary, should be included in future submissions to the The submission also includes several other components with alternative options under consideration. For example, a flagstaff is proposed in several locations. And the former pavilion site, which is kind of on the bottom right-hand part of the image here, is also identified as a potential site for interpretive elements. In general, staff finds the North Birm appropriate for a flagpole, given its location just to the right of the memorial. We also find that the Fort Mark Pavilion or kiosk site is an appropriate location for interpretive elements related to the memorial because of its visual connection to the memorial wall, as well as its centralized location within the park. The applicant has also identified some potential locations for other commemorative components, which are not yet fully described. Regarding these elements, staff does believe that they are unnecessary and would detract from the rest of the -- use of the rest of the site as an urban park. As I've described previously, the site should accommodate both park and memorial components, and expanding the memorial program across the entire site could be counter to that goal. As such, staff recommends the commission find that the commemorative elements should largely be limited to the memorial wall, the kiosk area, and the existing Pershing Memorial to help highlight their importance and also allow for other types of park uses across the site. So now, moving on to programming. Accommodating park activities, as I've mentioned, is critical to the success of the site, and this is evidenced by nearby examples, such as the Navy Memorial, which functions in a variety of ways. Pershing Park is located in a thriving downtown, near hotels and other commercial and civic uses, and given its location, the memorial has the opportunity to attract and engage a variety of visitors. It can be a destination for residents, office workers, as well as those seeking the memorial, if it is designed in an appropriate way. Previously, the commission requested the applicant provide information about how the site would continue to function as an urban park, as well as potential programming or activities that could occur on the site. This request seeks to first understand the locations where park activities could occur throughout the site, and then, secondly, to understand what kind of park uses might be reasonable and appropriate near the memorial from the applicant's perspective. We still believe this is very important and recommend the commission require a plan be prepared that identifies proposed urban park spaces and potential programming or activities that could occur in those spaces. Views and visibility into the park, and particularly, the connections to the south, have been raised previously as an issue for further consideration. The commission, in July of 2017, requested the applicant provide alternatives to improve pedestrian access from the side of the park. While the applicant has not provided any additional evaluation at this time, we also recognize that the birm and the sense of topography on the south side of the park is part of the park's original design. However, given the changing context and the need to create a place that will attract visitors, we believe enhancing pedestrian access would be beneficial for this side of the site. Possible approaches could include highlighting the existing entry points with landscaping, signage, or other elements. This could help provide visual clues for visitors who may not be aware that there's a memorial or even a park space here. So as such, staff recommends the commission require the applicant provide some design options as part of the next mission that improve the sense of entry at both the southeast and southwest corners of the site. And then finally, past reviews have noted that the existing Pershing walls are hard to read, and you can see them here in this image. We still recommend that continued consideration of improvements to these walls, to their legibility, and we recommend the commission request additional information to be provided describing any proposed enhancements that could help improve that reading of the memorial. And therefore, it is the executive director's recommendation that the commission note that the design of the memorial and park has changed over time to restore and rehabilitate a substantial portion of the park, finds that the improvements can enhance Pennsylvania Avenue and support an active downtown, finds the wall length has been reduced and a water feature has been integrated into the design, consistent with your previous requests, finds the freestanding wall creates a back that's not yet fully developed, and request the applicant continue to develop design alternatives that treat the wall in a unified way. Regarding the pool and the walkway, finds that three alternatives have been developed and request the applicant describe how the water feature in plaza area will be used throughout the year. Notes that the original pool design included additional planting and that the applicant will continue to work with the park service to address safety issues as appropriate. Regarding park use, the commission requests a plan that shows how the urban park spaces will be used and programmed, requires the applicant provide design options to enhance the sense of entry at the southwest and southeast corners of the park, finds the commemorative elements should generally be limited to the memorial wall, kiosk, and Pershing Memorial to highlight their importance, and requests additional information about how the existing Pershing walls can be improved. That concludes my presentation. We do have representatives from the World War I Centennial Commission, their design team, and, of course, the park service also available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fliss, very much. Members of the design team and such, does anyone have any -- do you have any comments you'd like to offer, or just be available for questions?
We're available for questions.
Okay. Yeah, great. Thank you. Questions or comments from the commission? Mr. Gallus?
You gonna make me go first, huh? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Fliss. I'm gonna start with some positive things. This is a very important memorial, I think. Its location is amazing. The views up and down Pennsylvania Avenue are really important, and I just see it as a very strategic placement for a very important memorial. My grandfather was a World War I veteran, wounded in World War I, so I take this very, very personally in this way. I like the new waterfall design. I think that the introduction of the scrim is also kind of brilliant to sort of help to both understand that the water was an important part of the original design, yet now it's no longer an ice skating rink. I used to ice skate on this site, so I know what that was about. And yet, it's clear that that has not proven to be a productive use of the space as it might have originally been envisioned. And so the scrim is a sort of homage to that and seems like, I think, a very nice notion. I also like the U shape from sort of, you know, in terms of how it frames the memorial wall. I think it really sets up a viewer coming from the south, entering this great urban space, to say, "Come, look at me. Come, understand what this memorial wall is, the story it's trying to tell." So I think that's definitely an improvement. And I like that we introduced the waterfall into the wall, which I think was something we all talked about, and a nice blend of past reference to the original design, and I think another invitation to come view the wall. My -- I think where I want to start to have some questions is about the approach to the wall from the west, and also the approach to the plaza from the south. I had these same comments the first time we reviewed this. I've walked those stairs. They're not friendly to inviting any pedestrian to use them. They're uneven in terms of the tread width, and I realize that this was a place that was designed before really accessibility was a focus. So we're in a different context today than we were when Mr. Friedberg designed this originally. But if you'd go to your slide where you show the west side of the freestanding wall, I think, I'm not sure what -- There, that one. No, thank you. So the challenge, this is a very lovely image, except the challenge to get to where you could sit, where that person is sitting, or where those people are standing, is that you may just break your ankle getting there. And I'm not exaggerating. We're used to standards of stair risers and -- Tread, sorry. Dropped a blank for a second. And unfortunately, this doesn't have it. And so while I understand that this is this notion of reusing the original elements, which is one of the main goals, as stated in your introductory remarks, I really think we're doing too much work for what isn't working in this memorial. And when we ask ourselves, "Why is this a place that no one knows about in Washington?" We have to say that part of it is because it doesn't invite you to come there. And I know accessibility is an important focus of the current design, but I do think not only this west side, but the south side, possibly even more so. The south side really becomes an inhibitor to the use of the space. And I wonder, I realize that there is this -- you're trying to walk the balance or tension between historic preservation and sort of what the new vision for this memorial and urban park would be, but how do we balance this in a way that's going to make this a memorial that is going to be as beloved as the other ones in Washington that are highly visited by millions and millions of people every year? And I guess I'd love to hear any comments the design team may have on that.
Greetings. My name is David Rubin. I'm principal of Land Collective. We are the landscape architects that have been brought on to the project to facilitate many of the challenges that you're citing. It's my pleasure to respond to the comments and concerns. First, I would note that the entire park has been recognized as the memorial, and so our goal is actually to try to do just that balancing act between the preservation of a significant modernist architecture, landscape architect oeuvre, and assist in the expression of an incredibly powerful moment in human history, which is the representation of the conflict of World War I, which involves so many nations and so much of the United States. I think that the challenges are still -- exist in the context of accessibility.
I think that the challenges are still, exist in the context of accessibility. You're correct in that it was constructed at a time when universal accessibility was not the norm. We are preserving all approaches along Pennsylvania, which is the at-grade condition, if you will, and enhancing and easing where transition needs to take place due to topographic change. I'm not sure that this design would be constructed the way it was, I think is when it came in.
So, with the benefit of almost forty years of experience here, and we can ask, "What is it that, to go try to move through those stairs?" Maybe there are ways to create pathways that would sort of change the pattern of the stairway without changing all of it. That could be something, as a suggestion, maybe there's a berm, there's something else that allows people to navigate pedestrians to come and read. If you're gonna put something on that wall, let me read it, or let me enter from the west side in order to be able to do that. Or also, let me enter, you know, from the south side in a way that allows me to do that. I'm gonna get off of that. I have a couple of quick more things. The pool depth, so I thought I read that the pool depth today is twelve inches, right? And yet, we're going to sixteen in some areas.
Arounds two sides of the existing pool, and bring participants off co-planar with that. At the same time, trying to define a scrim and meet and work with the parameters of being conscious of the original profile of the pool or plan of the pool relative to its embrace of the park, or the park embracing it. So, we are moving up and down in the context of what that depth can and should be, relative to where the individual perceives the monument, relative to movement from one elevation to another, and whether it should be co-planar or not. So, that's why you see multiple iterations here, where we're exploring whether there's a descent associated with it, and I apologize, I have to look this way to see better. Where the lower-left version shows a participant descending slightly to get to the existing condition of the level of water versus the co-planar condition on the right side, where we're interested in having the participant come right off of the existing elevation to engage the figurative memorial. So, it is not determined that's actually the nature of the next exploration that we've been doing to come to a solid resolution on that.
Gotcha, okay. Well, I can't wait to hear how you...
I hope that wasn't too complicated.
No, I think in your capable hands, Mr. Rubin, this'll be, this'll get worked out. I guess my last comment has to do with the plantings. Could you show, maybe just plan? And maybe the plan is not literal, but that one was okay. This is fine. So, one of the things that I understand didn't work about the current, the old fountain, is that maintenance became a real issue. And so, as I look at all the plantings, particularly as they approach the pools, right, and trees lose leaves, and where will those leave, the gravity takes them down into what will be this pool. And when I, when I look at this, and then I almost, you know, I think also some of the other imagery that's shown, you know, in some respects, we trying to create a forest around the pool? And, you know, there's a question of, how inviting does this become if it's too much of a forest? I love trees, don't get me wrong, but I also wonder if trees adjacent, immediately adjacent to the pool are so wise, given the maintenance issues associated with that.
So, I want to, if I can explain a couple of, make a couple of responses to the singular question. One of the goals of the team is to refurbish the park into something that is reverential to the event that is being celebrated, but also recognizes that it is a significant civic component of the fabric of Washington, D.C. So, the users will be varied, and their experiences will be varied. One of the things that we're striving to do in the refurbishment of it, because it was built at a time when soil sciences were not as advanced, and the understanding of the relationship of soil volumes to biomass was not as understood, we're trying to work with that. We're also reducing the number of trees from its original intent in collaboration with Umi van Sweden, who were the original horticulturists that followed Friedberg. So, and we're also reducing the number of trees associated with the berm because they're not being supported by the volume of soil that exists there. So, the, I hope that we'll be able to show you in a future representation that we've been good stewards of the balance between usable programmable space and tempering climate in the context of a warm city during the summer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Quick question. Where is the bulk of the water engineering systems, the pumps and such?
Am I allowed to point? Is it better to...
Yeah.
So, I'm pointing into the northern portion of the, sorry, the northern portion of the western berm.
Northern portion of the western berm has vaults underneath it that we're working with an engineer to figure out the full extent that's gonna be required to make it a functioning, viable pool once again.
Okay, thank you. I thought those were the probably were.
Its final location has not been determined that I...
Sure.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments on the concept? Yes, that's right.
I have two things. So, I'm interested in the west end of the park and what seems to be a bifurcation of purpose, which probably some people are critical of, but I wanna advocate for it. And the reason I do is because I think, to Mr. Gallus's point, I'm not sure that there, I'm not sure that there aren't too many trees at the western end to create a space that's recreational, not necessarily contemplative, a little bit less directly, obviously, related to the whole memorial experience, because, and that feels appropriate to me. I've commented before, while I don't think it's the task that you've been given to sort of mash up a memorial and an urban park is impossible, it's darn hard. And I think you're really close. I don't, I don't at all mind the, even the idea of leaving that wall blank if you come to it, because I think it's hard to be in, it would be difficult to recreate in a memorial park that, where there's a relentless insistence that you think about these things, and that's the purpose of it. But I also think that this is, the place that this park is located in the city is pretty relentless in terms of green space, if you have half an hour to have lunch. And I think it's okay to leave it, to let the west end of the site be not unfettered by memorial elements, but absent them, and accommodate that. If that's, if that's what happens, then I would think about a few fewer trees. So, that's one thing. And then, the thing that I still, I understand that the U-shaped walkway is the applicant's preference, but I would still try to talk you out of it, because it, there's something about the approach. I mean, it's one thing to approach the memorial narrative and hang a right. It doesn't feel, I don't know what it is, whether it's because, well, we don't always read right to left, do we? But anyway, it feels a more natural way to approach and linger. When you're, and then you'd be headed out. The U configuration seems to me to subconsciously trip some notion that my time is limited, and I've got to finish the motion and head on out. And I can't explain that rationally, why I think that is so, but I adamantly do.
You have every right to do that.
It's the way we are, we move, we made a lot of, a series of unconscious decisions all the time, and the idea of having to make another right-hand turn feels something, feels, it insinuates some emergent, no, some urgency that I don't think you want to, or I would infer some urgency that I don't think you want to imply. And I had one more thing, but you know, I'm middle-aged, and I forgot. So, I'm not gonna pretend like I remember what it was. If it comes back to me, I will say something.
You have a marker.
Oh, but I do want, this isn't it, in case I don't remember again, I just wanna say...
I'm writing these down, by the way.
I know this has been a struggle, and I think it's been worth it, because it's really, I think you're really close, and it's not been an easy job. So, thank you for hanging that.
Can I say thank you to you for just that comment? That was greatly appreciated, and I'm sure that the team also appreciates that comment. To the notion of the trees on the west, and please don't hold me to the exact percentage, but I believe within the berms specifically, it's almost a one-third reduction based on the soil science and tree growth issue, so I encourage you to hold your thought, and to the next presentation, we may be able to satisfy your concerns about that. In the context of the, that sort of issue of bifurcation, it's exactly what we're striving for, which was, when Friedberg created that, the park, it was about space-making and experience, and the way in which the memorial, as its manifest, exists, it's on one side about conflict and the other about contemplation. And the notion is that you don't always need to be confronted, but some, but memory is a good thing, right? And sometimes it comes in our minds, and sometimes it goes out, but it's there to be recognized when appropriate. With regard to the L shape versus the U shape, I appreciate the legibility issue. It's something that we've been grappling with in the context of, for all intents and purposes, in Western culture, you read left to right. And so, trying to find a way that we could make the soldier's journey a legible experience, and to strike a balance between the invitation to confront and deal with the challenges, in particular with the shell-shock figure, which is the penultimate experience within the legibility of the memorial. We also want to practice or propose an aspect of matriculation that takes you out of the everyday, brings you out across the water towards the legible figurative component, have it be read, and then allow a procession back out that begins to place you back into the real world in such a way that you can appreciate the sacrifices that were made in the context of that conflict. It's part of the design process. We will continue to explore.
Yes, Mr. Cash?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, it seems like in these latest plans, we keep focusing on the west side of the park, but the east side, where the Pershing walls and the statues right now, it seems to me that it's pretty much now unchanged. I mean, we get rid of the kiosk, and we put the, I actually like the treatment there where the kiosk is. I think there's a lot of possibilities of something there. But I feel like the Pershing side is actually one of the more underutilized sides of the park right now. I walk through there every day. I work in the Wilson Building right across the street, and I walk up those southeast stairs, and I mean, it's just, you just feel like you're going through a wasteland, and then you end up on this really big, yeah, actually, the photo, so I walk up those stairs, and you end up here. I mean, no one sits on that bench because he can't read the walls anyway. It's just very clunky, it's just not an inviting space at all. So, I, I mean, I wonder, maybe this is kind of too high-level, but I wonder if maybe we're not focusing enough on this side of what we could do with some things, if now the intent has become to really preserve the west side. I just feel like there's a lot of space over here, you go over where the kiosk is now, and there's, and actually, behind the Pershing wall, if that wall straight ahead of us was gone, the grade there actually isn't all that bad. So, you might even have some opportunities to reutilize a little bit of that, in a way, dead green space right now that exists behind that wall, because the grading isn't really as rough as it is on the south side. I know there's been a lot of talk about the grade on the south side in that berm, and I understand, I think during Mr. Fliss's presentation, part of the rationale for this I wrote down was seclusion from the noisy streets. Pennsylvania Avenue is really not as noisy as it was back in 1980, because now that East Street's been closed off, most of that is actually parking for the City Council and Mayor's Office and the Department of Commerce now. So, I don't think we're ever really gonna, unless you really blow up the whole thing and start again, I don't know if there's a lot you can do with that south side, it's just because I think the context has changed so much. But I mean, I really think there's a lot of opportunities over here on the seaside. And the only other thing I wanted to say about the west side and looking at that wall, I feel like the several iterations that we've seen of the design, the placement of that wall pretty much seems to have come from where we're getting rid of the Zamboni parking lot, and we're blowing that up and kind of replacing that with a wall. But when I've walked through there, actually, one of the more utilized sides of the park is along the 15th Street side, and I see a lot of people sitting on that plaza on the 15th Street side, and a lot of those circular benches up there. And suddenly, you're gonna put this wall that will block your view from sitting up there on the, on the street level, you won't really be able to see the pool, you'll have the back of this memorial wall. It just seems like you actually kind of lose one of the nicer aspects of where people actually use the park right now, which is sitting there along the 15th Street side. So, I just wonder if maybe there's, I mean, it's, it might be a lot of rethought, but I just feel like that wall has kind of been shoved against that 15th Street side, because that was the original context where we were looking at when, I mean, several iterations ago. Maybe there's something more creative or realigning it, but I just think that the backside of that wall and that one picture of kind of just like that notch where people are gonna sit there, and I just think that it blocks off actually one of the nicer sides of the park. So, I know there's a lot there. I think that the design does look much better than some of the other iterations, but I think there's maybe still some more to think about on the east side, maybe better utilizing that.
One quick thing. When you come back, will you show us some elevations looking toward the south, from inside the plaza?
Sure, yes, absolutely.
That's what I was, following Mr. Cash's comment, I was just looking at the south side. There are no significant seating areas on the south side facing the...
It's just stairs. It goes straight.
It's just the stairs, yeah.
Dives down.
Yeah, it's just the stairs there.
There actually are, there are, there are three...
Those three little tree boxes there with the curved seating areas.
...is covering it, but these are actually the sitter...
Okay. Right, 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 got it.
You can actually, when you're on Pennsylvania Avenue South, you can see people sitting up there. Perched, yeah.
Yeah, got it, thank you. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Rubin or Mr. Fliss? Thank you, we look forward to your next submission.
My pleasure, thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am.
Yep. Oh, we have to, we have to approve the comments, sorry.
He's getting to that.
Yes, right. Is there a motion on the EDR to approve the comments? I'm sorry. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the EDR as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Thank you. All right, I'm with you again now. Agenda item 5B is to approve the final site development plans for a new security fence at Joint Base Meyer-Henderson Hall. That's in Arlington, and is brought to us by the Department of the Army.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. The Army has submitted final site development plans for a new security fence at Joint Base Meyer-Henderson Hall. As you may recall, this fence project was last at the Commission in May of this year. Staff has worked with the Army... Staff has worked with the Army since that time in an effort to address the Commission's concerns with two of the gates that connect this base with Arlington National Cemetery. The Army has also proposed some minor changes to a third gate, and I'll describe these changes later on in this presentation. So, as a refresher, this proposal is for a two-mile-long security fence shown here in yellow, that will parallel an existing historic wall that currently separates Joint Base Meyer Henderson Hall from Arlington National Cemetery. The Army noted the need for a security fence to complete the secure perimeter for the base, and you see the existing security fence shown here in the blue color. This presentation will focus on design changes for the two of the proposed gates, the Selfridge and Memorial Chapel gates, which the Commission commented on in May. The photos for these gates are shown here on the left, and I'll discuss Selfridge first and then move to Memorial Chapel. And then finally, as I said, I'll describe the Old Post Chapel gate design, which has changed since you last saw it. So, Selfridge Gate is located along the historic wall and is framed by two large stone piers you see in this photo. This interest, this entrance is used by the old guard and other employees accessing the cemetery on a daily basis. It's important because it's one of the two gates with stone piers along this historic wall. You can see that there's also the Baker's Creek Memorial on the left of this image, and this honors the service members that lost their lives in an airplane crash during World War II. I'll also point out that there is an existing sliding gate that you can't see, and this gate is actually on the Arlington National Cemetery side, so the image on the left, the smaller image, that's looking from the cemetery towards the base, and you see this existing gate, and that gate is actually going to be removed as part of this project. So, the Army's preliminary design proposal is shown here. It included these four-inch metal posts along the, there was the fence, at the gate itself, there were four-inch metal posts on either side of the gate, they're identified here. And you can also see that there is a sliding arm gate that was included in the proposal. There wasn't any landscaping or shrubs or anything that was incorporated in here. In May, the Commission requested that the Army consider the use of piers, posts, or other elements to clearly frame the gates and explore additional design details that will help differentiate the gate from the proposed fence. So, since May, the Army and staff have discussed a number of options for the gate, including gate type, gate location, material and height of the piers, or if you're not doing piers, maybe changing the width of the posts, as well as adding some landscaping to address the Commission's comments. Placing a new gate within the existing stone piers to minimize the visual impact would eliminate the redundancy of gate within a gate, you have the two gates here. However, the Army noted that since the historic wall is the cemetery property, it's not able to accomplish this. The Army also considered a swing arm gate option, however, the design that met the Army's security requirements was as industrial in character as this one and offered little benefits. The Army tried placing new stone piers at the gate as well, but these visually competed with the existing historic piers that were behind it, and they blocked the views of the gate, of the piers as well. And finally, the Army explored placing different sized posts, metal posts, at eight inches and six inches, as well as adding some landscaping on both sides of the entrance to help frame the gate. While staff found that the wider posts provided really too much visual weight for the entrance, we did believe that the landscaping helped to delineate the entrance and soften the industrial look of the gate. So, this is what they are proposing now, which, they have not changed the size of the posts, they're still four-inch posts, they have included, incorporated landscaping on either side of the gate, and have also removed the existing gate on the opposite side of the, on the Arlington Cemetery side of the existing piers. So, understanding the necessity of this project that the Army has stated, we find that the proposed approach to this, to this gate minimizes, minimize posts or piers and add landscaping to screen the slide-arm gate at this entrance is the best solution for reducing the gate's appearance and preserving views of the cemetery and historic wall. And staff also supports the Army's intention to remove the existing slide gate at the Arlington National Cemetery side of the historic wall, which would help to reduce the clutter at this entrance. So next, we move to the Memorial Chapel gate. It is typically used by the public once a month, on average, to accommodate large funerals occurring at the cemetery, excuse me, occurring at the Memorial Chapel, and they move through the gate to the cemetery. This gate is very important because it is very visible, as it is very close to Carpenter Road, which you see here in the foreground. This road is the main north-south connector for the base. So this was the preliminary design for the Memorial Chapel gate, and included the slide-arm gate that you saw in the Selfridge images previously, and this also includes the four-inch posts on either side of the gate. There is, there was no landscaping that was incorporated for the preliminary design. So now, the Army has proposed limited shrubs on both sides of the gate, similar to the Selfridge gate, that will help to delineate the entrance and soften the industrial look of the proposed slide-arm gate. Again, we understand the need, the Army's need for these security measures, and staff is supportive of this minimal addition. And finally, while this wasn't the, wasn't part of the Commission's action, the Army did commit to adding landscaping to the Old Post Chapel entrance at the May meeting. Here is a view of the preliminary design, which you see on the left, with a side-by-side comparison with the final design. And just so you can see some changes, they've added, in the final design, a new curbing, which incorporates a new landscaped area, which kind of goes around where that, where the fence is, was previously on the preliminary site plan. And that was just showing where the new slide-arm gate is. And this is an image, it's very, somewhat dark, but it includes the new landscaping on the right-hand side, which is, which will be in front of where the slide-arm gate would be during the day, which is, it will be in the open position during the day. And you can see the new curbing that incorporates that whole landscaped area on the right-hand side of the slide. So, therefore, it is the Executive Director's recommendation that the Commission approve the final site development plans for a proposed new fence between Joint Base Meyer Henderson Hall and Arlington Cemetery. Note that the Army has explored several design refinements for the proposed gates in response to the Commission's May 2018 requests. Find that the Army considered a single swing gate for the Selfridge entrance, however, it is, it still requires the same industrial-looking crossbars as a slide-arm gate and can be placed between the piers. Find that the options to enhance the entryways with wider posts or piers result in additional visual clutter, compete with the existing historic resources, and emphasize the new security measures. Also find that the proposed approach to minimize posts or piers and add landscaping is the best solution for reducing the gate's appearance and preserving views of the cemetery and historic wall. And then finally, notes that the Army will conclude the, both Section 106 and NEPA processes shortly. NCPC does not have an independent responsibility for Section 106 or NEPA, for the project. That concludes our presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. There are representatives from the Army to answer questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Mr. Rhodes.
Mr. Chairman, I would just share one comment, and that is, I know there's an appreciation by the Commission on the requirement that is trying to be addressed here, and I know there are many thoughts and views of the big fence on the side. What I would like to remind is that the impacted view that has been represented here, that they're trying to work on addressing, is on the Army's side, on our contained side. On the public side, Arlington National Cemetery, it maintains a character and in fact takes away one of the fences that was impacting some of the columns, but it really is a secondary effect there, because you're seeing the Arlington National Cemetery's stone wall, brick wall, and all that area is being maintained and not impacted, it's only a secondary impact on that for the public. The impact is on the Army's, who is trying to address a need that they have on their controlled and contained side in there. So I would just add that, we didn't really have pictures that showed it from the other side, we did in the last presentation last time, so it was an opportunity to see that. So I just want to remind of that aspect of it, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Gallus.
I want to add to that, that as it relates to the Old Post Chapel gate, I think, which is seen by a lot of public, right, it's highly visible, and I think the combination of beauty and elegance with the need for security, we found a way to make it better, and I think it is better, much better. Because for the most part, what the public will see during the kind of daytime hours is that gate open, and we are essentially hiding it, for the most, I mean, trying to with landscaping, and I think that that's an improvement. But the question is, how much do we have to abandon beauty and elegance in exchange for critical security, is I think what's on the table. And as it relates to Selfridge, I think we've proven that beauty and elegance is gone from our minds. And I guess I'm disappointed, because I know everybody, everybody, all the stakeholders appreciate the, what that gate feels like as you approach it, it really is something powerful, you know, as we went there to see it, it moves you. And it won't move you anymore, and nothing's going to move there, it's constipated, I guess you could say. But I really, I don't have a solution, I kind of just am sad about that. The other thing that I'd like to just ask about, first of all, there's a question, because we're replacing the parking lot, where is the parking lot replaced? Is that the Old Post Chapel parking lot, or what?
The parking lot is actually to the very south of this whole area, it's actually, I don't think I have the image here, but this image, this is, this is where the Old Post Chapel is.
Where are we, I can't see.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, where are you?
Okay, they're not seeing this on my, on the screen. How about I do that? Okay, well, I can't, it's my, the thing is frozen, but in the middle of this image, there's kind of like a, you see where the, these areas are, that are kind of the three or four areas down here that are kind of almost rectilinear looking? Just above, just, just south of that, or just to the north of that, or just above that, is an area that is, that, there it's not. Now we can't see it all. It's on the very southern end of this, of the entire project, it's actually on Henderson Hall portion of the base, it's nowhere near any of the Old Post Chapel or any of that. They're really replacing parking spaces that they have removed as part of the fence project. And I kind of described that earlier on in previous presentations, I thought it would be helpful just to focus on the issues that...
Okay, I appreciate that, and, oops, we're on the wrong one here. I'm wondering if you could go back to that aerial image when you get, when you get to it, please?
So, this is easier because it's, you can see where the, where this, the words, kind of new security fence are, just to this, just in the very southern portion of this is where the, that new parking area is. The area that you were, that we were talking about, I don't know if you can see this.
Yeah, we can see.
That's where the Old Post Chapel is, which is up here kind of mid, mid part of the new fence.
Okay, okay. So, I actually, can you find that photograph that you were just looking at, the other aerial, for a second? I'm going to, my last, there we go. And can you point, where is the wall today?
So, the wall itself, it follows along here.
Can you use your red pointer?
Hold on.
Or somebody...
I'm sorry, I don't know what you guys are seeing, so I don't know what, I guess it's seeing, not seeing anything.
Can someone just point to it? I'd like to see.
It's along...
My, my question has to do with the trees.
It's here, it goes here.
Okay, so those trees that, up toward the top that you were just pointing to, are beautiful pin oaks, I think, we were walking under them, they're, you know, great, mature trees. And I don't know, I know we're concerned more about a car intrusion, or a car bomb, or something like that, maybe, but I, you know, I did point out, I think at our last meeting and when we were at the site, that it'd be pretty easy to just hop over the fence by climbing the tree. And I'm wondering, has there been any further thought about that in any of your design strategies?
I can ask the team from, from the Army to come up to respond to that, but they were looking at having some, there's going to be some patrol that actually happens, as well as some security cameras that will be, you know, trained in this area, so that you could see if there was something that was coming over the fence or trying to come over the fence, but they were really trying to keep the kind of, that casual person from thinking that they want to walk through there, that this isn't a location to go in, but I'll let them describe that a little bit.
Afternoon, Brett and I, with Jacob, a landscape architect for the team. The, if you recall, earlier in the design process, we talked about fence alignment alternatives, and we tried several different ones, some that were very linear, some that had rectangular jogs, some that had very, what I'll call noticeable and radical veers in them, and a lot of that was done to preserve the vegetation. We also then realized that the, that security aspect that Carlton just mentioned is in fact going to be 100% covered video monitoring CCTV along the entire stretch. So, along with the fence construction, there's been designed by the Public Works Department at the base, the security system, and also new lighting along there as well, that is all being done in conjunction with the new fencing.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Dixon.
The, the gate at Henderson Hall, Kate, is that accessible by folks who have already been admitted into Henderson Hall area, and will it be by foot, only by foot, or not by car, or is it going to be, can you get into the cemetery from there?
Are you talking, are you talking about the, the, there's a gate that is, you said by Henderson Hall?
Well, there's one, as I look at the arrow on your, on your illustration, that seems to be in the Henderson Hall area. I'm just wondering whether you'll be able to access the cemetery through there.
It might be a south gate you're referring to.
Maybe it's, it's the gate, the gate he has the arrow on there, right. Not the chapel gate, but the Selfridge gate.
Both, but both of those are accessible now, will remain accessible.
They will, for anyone in there could go into the cemetery, correct, if they...
Well, the memorial gate, like Carlton mentions, is...
Not for the public, that's the cemetery.
Yes, it's not going to be used. Now, another advantage of having that in the proximity to Old Post Chapel gate is if there was a large ceremony, still an old post, or they did have an issue with gate operation, you have a second point of entry that's on the same perimeter road system inside the cemetery.
I understand, thank you.
Any additional discussion?
The question before us is the approval of the...
It's largely an internal policy document for the agency, and as such, will not be formally reviewed by the Commission. However, the document will provide some helpful context regarding NPS transportation priorities, which may inform several NCPC core responsibilities, including the Federal Capital Improvements Program, the transportation element of the context.
I know when you think about transportation planning, Park Service probably doesn't come to the top of your mind. So I'm going to walk you through sort of an overview of the process we went through for our long-range transportation plan, give you a sense of the assets that are incorporated, walk you through our key issues that we evaluated during the process, and the NCPC, WADA, all the local plant transportation agencies... local plant, transportation agencies, all the local planning agencies. We held a scenario planning network, workshop, to sort of kick things off and talk about things in the general sense, in terms of forming our issues with our stakeholders. We had about 44 different participants across all of our stakeholders, and I've included a list of several of those. We, after our scenario planning, we did a number of internal workshops, and then reported out to external workshops to get the feedback along the way, not just at the beginning and at the end. So the first part of our process is, what do we have? What are the assets that we have? So we went through and inventoried everything that had anything to do with transportation, and came up with, where are they, what are their condition, and what do we know about them? And looked at them, not only from where they are and what they are, but how much do they cost to replace, and what is the deferred maintenance associated with those? So that we are getting an accurate picture of not only what our assets are, but what is the financial obligations associated with them. So then, knowing what everything is and where it is, what are the key issues? So with our stakeholders, we developed a, a whole list of what the key issues could be. And then we took those back to our superintendents and leadership, and did a survey to walk through those issues to sort of field test. The issues that we were hearing from our partners and our stakeholders, where do, do our superintendents and our leadership consider those the same issues? And this is sort of how it came out, probably not unexpected. We developed a vision, which, you know, transportation for the Park Service is, is a tough one. And when you're talking about how those are connecting to our spaces, things that we don't have control of. And we came up with some key pieces. We want it to be mission focused, so it's not that just point A to point B, but the visitor experience piece I was alluding to. Financially stay sustainable, so that we're building what works, but it's also low maintenance and operations. It's interconnected, not only within the park, but into adjacent networks, and it's equitable. There's multiple modes, and it's safe for people to get there. From that, we developed a, a range of goals over these five program areas that look at asset management, safety, security, transportation, finance, resource protection, and visitor use and experience. And then from these, we developed objectives, strategies, and performance measures. And, and so, not to take you through five goals with a bazillion objectives and strategies, walk you through how this sort of plays out for one goal, which is visitor experience. So you see, we, in, in this particular goal, we have four objectives, two strategies to get to those objectives, and then about four different ways we're going to measure that. And how that sort of plays out, when you're thinking about it in terms of projects, one of the pieces that we needed to understand and objective is, how are people getting to our parks? Where, what is that first and that last mile? We didn't have that information, we didn't know that information. So one of the projects that's already been initiated out of the LRTP is a transportation visitor use study. And we have distributed over 2,100 surveys in six of our parks that were representative of the region, to give us a sense of what are the barriers that people have in getting to our parks, getting around our parks, and then getting back home. We'll use that information to meet some of our visitor use goals.
Maybe you need to explain to folks the code for our parks?
Oh, sorry, I didn't even think, so the, the six representative parks are Prince William Forest Park, Antietam, Manassas, George Washington, Memorial Parkway, Rock Creek, and CNO Canal National Historical Park. Sorry, we have shorthand for everything. So, you don't, you can develop all the goals and strategies that you want, but if you can't actually implement them and think about them strategically and pay for them, then you're, you pretty much have a document that sits on the shelf. So a really key piece of this is looking at investment strategy. How are we going to fund whatever we need to do? So the first step in doing that is, is looking at what money comes in, which comes in to us from a variety of different ways, and, and totals about $34.3 million of funds that we get in for transportation assets.
Can I, before you flip on that one, I just want to emphasize this number, $34 million every year, for all of the stuff that we have to maintain? And note for folks that we just awarded a contract a few months ago for $225 million for Arlington Memorial Bridge.
And I should caveat that the numbers you'll see does not include Memorial Bridge.
Right. But it, it just gives you a sense of the scale, right? When we have a problem like Memorial Bridge, our normal assets are not sufficient to come anywhere close to tackling that.
Can you briefly tell us what the title, what those fees are?
Sure, I'll try. Title 23, and John, actually, we started this together.
I was gonna say, there's this slide on here that showed, that has a breakdown of what those are.
But you, I think you mean specifically what those codes mean.
Yeah, so title, so Title 15 and 16 is like rec fee.
Oh, fee, right.
And then, yeah.
Yep, I got it, thank you.
Take you back. So, once you, that was what we get in, this is what goes out. So where do we spending that $34.3 million on? So looking at where it's going, and then looking at what the gap is in terms of condition. And so, our gap is about $50 million, based on the historic average that we come, that, of money that we get in, what we forecast it, we need to keep things in a good working order. And then, also throwing in O and M, not just projects, and then our gap is about $50 million. So what do you do with that? You have to develop a strategy to balance it, yes.
Good question, since your nightmare boss has already interrupted you a few times. So when you say, is that an annual gap?
Yes.
And, so you have a $50 million deficit every year, which I assume accumulates beyond that?
Yes.
So what, if, can you estimate your cumulative gap?
Well, the, the entire deferred maintenance bill for National Park Service is somewhere upwards of $11 billion at the moment.
Right, but I mean, can you slice out the transportation?
Of which, I think more than half, was it 60, 70%, was related to transportation and roads and other infrastructure. So.
Please continue.
Thank you.
Efficiently depressed now.
So you have to come up with an, an investment strategy, because you really have to plan well for what you're getting. So, together with our stakeholders, we took a look at a large range of strategies, and I'm going to just jump to this one, where we looked at, and, and on here, I'll, I'll spare you all the coding for PCR and FCI and BHI, but these are all related to conditions for different transportation assets. The goal of looking at the strategy was to balance the condition of the asset itself with cost and the bottom line amount of money. And not just for assets that we have now, but also to have a little bit for future assets, because at the time of this planning, we had just completed a paved trail plan with lots of objectives and projects that we wanted to implement. And we needed some of this funding to help us with that. So setting aside a little tiny bit for new projects, and using that, and the goals with that new money would be that it was be partnership projects, or projects where we could leverage different amounts of funding. And looking at the status quo, if we did everything as we do today, here's, so one column is the current condition, one column is, if we did everything as we did today, spending the money that the way we did today, what does that do to condition and terms? So, red is bad, yellow is in the middle, and green is good. We looked at about six or seven different strategies to help balance out condition and funding, and needs for O and M and new projects. And we developed a strategy that we refer to as the road-bridge balance. So looking at our high priority roads, which are the, the roads that are in those upper classes, so those are the parkways, the big roads, the high transportation needs, and prioritizing our funding across the classes, and with the bridges that connect those roads. Having some, having enough O and M to cover our integrated costs, to balance out our capital spending, and have that little bit for additional projects. So this funding strategy is what we will use moving forward, to evaluate our project priorities. Between the goals and the objectives, and this financial strategy is what we'll use to figure out what projects will be funded moving forward.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So, things like Rock Creek Park, where you just redid road bids and things like that, was that part of this normal budget as well, or were those also special procurements?
I think that was a combination of in-house funding and special procurements.
Yeah, well, there are a number of, of financial resources that could be applied to a project like that. Generally speaking, the majority of the funding for Beach Drive reconstruction, which is still ongoing, it came from that $34 million a year. We can, what, what happens, I mean, that's an, an average, and what can happen is that we can pile up some money from year to year, and then be able to spend it. Or we can borrow money from future projects, or we can borrow money from other regions. So that we can, you know, we might actually get $50 million one year, and then $20 million the next, something like that, to be able to pool money together to handle projects of that scope. Unfortunately, that, those, they do negatively affect our ability to do other things. I mean, we were held up on some rehab work on the George Washington Mall Parkway for a long time, like right by the interchange with the 14th Street Bridge. Took a long time to get that one done, and it was in terrible shape, because we were, you know, borrowing Peter to pay Paul, and trying to cobble together the money. One of the worst examples of this, unfortunately, was Fort Dupont Drive and Fort Davis Drive through Fort, Fort Dupont, which we just awarded a contract for, and it'll get finished in about six months. But we were starving that road for a long time, because of the other drains, our, some more bridge, quick, you know, the, the, the emergency fixes that we had to do on the bridge, some of the other repair projects that we had to do that took precedence. We finally held onto enough money to get that one done. So we're constantly borrowing forward, borrowing back, borrowing from other regions. Occasionally, we, there are grant programs that we can tap. That's how we were able to pull a lot of the money for Arlington Memorial Bridge. We also pulled a lot of that from the Park Service's regular line item construction budget. So in other words, we were taking money out that would have otherwise gone to visitor centers and other projects and, and parks in order to get to that. So, just because it was such a, it was so out of scale with the normal transportation program.
Mr. Chairman?
I noticed that when you did your earliest survey, you spoke of earlier, there was no mention of the Anacostia Park. Is there a reason that wasn't included in the process?
Oh, for the visitor survey?
Yes.
So the transportation, we couldn't, we didn't have enough funds to do the survey in every park.
Right.
Of the region. So we picked a representative set of parks. And we only wanted one park from the district, and we wanted one park in the district with a heavy transportation need. Anacostia Drive isn't quite the same as Rock Creek.
Right.
So we wanted to sort of get that experience from a district park. There are visitor use surveys going on in Anacostia that are not transportation related, that are visitor use related.
The reason I ask, there's a lot of focus on that side of the river, in terms of developers, people coming in, et cetera.
Yep.
And a lot of the funding for your parks nationally have come from private sector people, have donated or done things. And I don't know whether or not there's any connection between those folks who are interested in outside of the river, and the park, and your needs to do something with the park, to make it a greater amenity, is, may, may be a value, I don't know. Maybe it would show up in another survey, and not the transportation surveys.
I, I think it would. I mean, we, when it comes to Anacostia Park, there's a lot of partnerships that we're working on to do a variety of different things, from park improvements, to programming, to research across the city with anyone. We're always willing to have a conversation about what we can do with another partner.
Yeah, I don't think the rail there is anything that you would look at, but that CSX line that's back there is a monster problem, but.
Yeah, that's not Park Service, that's ours, thankfully.
I don't think they know who it is. That's one of the problems, they can't seem to find out who owns it, who controls it. Any add as another discussion. I want to be clear, in Rock Creek Park, are the bridges DC's responsibility, and the roads, the Park Service's responsibilities? I asked you once before, because I was concerned about one of the bridges that was falling apart, and, and it was construction work being done on it, and I said, well, you're all doing a great job. And you said, well, it's really the city, DC's responsibility. So what's the deal on that?
It's, it's a mixture. I mean, some of the roads are, are the city's, and some of them are, are ours, and the same is true with the bridges. I mean, the bridge right before the tunnel, just out of the tunnel.
Yes.
That's ours, and that was recently reconstructed, and we're adding a pedestrian bridge there. We also tap, you know, we, we do make use of some of the funds that are available from the district, particularly when it comes to trail bridges and trail reconstructions and things like that. So we, we work very much hand in hand.
Yeah.
We often have to issue permits to the district so that they can fix their roads that are bounded on both sides by our property. It's, it's not so simple as to say, the roads are ours, the bridges are theirs, or anything like that.
I mean, I noticed in your discussion of funding, there was no mention of, I didn't, maybe it was one of those acronyms I didn't recognize, but the DC involvement, I guess they're involved in some of the help with this terrible financial problem you got.
Absolutely. And again, they, you know, particularly when it comes to alternate transportation, so trails and, and pedestrian facilities, and things like that, there are, there, the city gets money through the grants that they get from the federal government, that can be used to build trail facilities on our property, and that happens.
Yeah.
On a regular basis. So again, we work hand in hand on things. Sometimes the, you know, there are monies that come from the, the district's transportation federal funds.
Yep.
That have been reallocated to us, that happened with our Arlington Memorial Bridge. It also happened with funds from Virginia.
Yeah.
Neither the state of, or the Commonwealth of Virginia, or the District of Columbia were particularly happy about that. But the Congress did that without our asking them to.
I just wanted to raise, because often as we, some people don't recognize the involvement or the contribution the district makes of things.
Absolutely.
And they think we kind of, you know, but we are involved, and we do something.
For, for another example, the 11th Street Bridge reconstruction that occurred a few years ago.
Right.
Some land was needed from the Park Service, and there was also, there are impacts on the Park Service land. And we did eventually get some compensation from that. It mostly, I think it's primarily or exclusively federal funds, but it was funds that were allocated for that project. But we're getting a couple million dollars to do some work in Anacostia Park. Unfortunately, it took until now to get the agreement and to get the money. We may not actually have the money yet, but any, any day now.
November.
We're going to get the money. And that'll go to improvements in the park.
I noticed also that this transportation discussion you're having may touch upon the, the land that was given to, for, for the Coast Guard and for Homelands, that, that space, that the land was given up from, from the park in Anacostia. The money that was, that was given to Park Service was supposedly going to be used to help with the park in that area. And is that anything, has that been resolved yet, or is that still up there?
We have, we got 358 million, is that what it was? What did we get?
For Shepherd Parkway?
Shepherd Parkway.
Shepherd Parkway, yes.
432,000.
432,000. Sorry, did I say million?
Yes.
Oh, oops.
Like the million number.
I wish it was millions.
432,000, I got, you know, it's been a long day, and it's only 2:00. No, yeah, we got 400-some thousand, and that's being allocated primarily to the, what is known as park lands, but that STEM section of Shepherd Parkway.
Yeah, well, that's, that park land there.
Yeah.
We'll get some of that, I would hope.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the plan.
So, next steps. We are about, we are done with the document itself, and it's currently being printed. We plan to put it out at the end of October. As John mentioned, it is not a document for public comment, because it's more of an internal strategic planning document, but we will be putting it out to share with the public by the end of October. So, I don't know if there's any other questions.
Any additional questions for Ms. Stedham? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, very good. That is the end of our agenda. We had a happily short meeting today. Thank you for your attention. We had two good, two good items and a good information presentation.
He's a man.
We will see you in a month. Thank you. And again, Sally Barnes, welcome, we're glad you're here.
I feel right. I'm glad. So I'll single up.
Yep. Thanks so much. We are adjourned.